All right, we'll go ahead and bring this meeting into order. Let's welcome everyone for coming. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Having a motion in a second. If they have to say aye, aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. With that, I lead a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to item of code 742061A. Having a motion in a second. Do we need roll call votes?
Attorney Houston.
Yes.
Vice Attorney Rissom.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Quinney.
With that, we are in executive session. Out of courtesy for everyone that has a spot, the board is going to move to the other boardroom to hold our executive session, which should not take very long, and then we'll be getting back into opening to open session again. Okay, so we've come out of the executive session. I'll entertain any motions this time. I'll move to approve the administration's recommendation for hiring a new CFO. We'll go out of the second. Having a motion in a second. If all of theirs say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move back into the remainder of board meeting. Coming into public input. I'm sure everyone is fully aware that the Fire Marshal has issued a certificate of occupancy for this room at thirty-six. I didn't hear anything told by anyone, so...
So, with my presence being here, we have a fire launch. So, if anything is keeping exits, it's not as clear. You have it. I asked some of the good ones over there that are helping out to get something to keep that exits clear. I mean, you're able to go over that now since I am here present with that. The other one is with it is, I just ask that when you do this, help your neighbors out. We have, I mean, all these chairs and everything are kind of tight. Ones that are on the hallway, if you can exit out, I mean, the door that came in this room here, put the back out, that back way. We have additional exits in there. And it's designed, what the fire code is set up based on this room size and configuration. It can go up to the seventy-eight if all these tables weren't here on here. But it's here for protection. The fire code over the years has been broken by fatalities and tragedies that happen. So, the main thing on here is just for the public safety. And I just want to make sure that everybody here is safe and that you know where your exits are at if there is an emergency. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
No, thank you.
Great, nice.
All right, so we'll go ahead and move on into the public input. Is there anyone that wasn't, hasn't told Rosina that they're here to speak? Anyone?
Oh, good.
Okay.
There's one up here.
There is one up here. Everyone has a maximum of three minutes to speak. When your name is called, if you'd like to come forward, you may. Otherwise, if you want your message read into the record, it can be. The first person is Claire Bird. Okay. She or she's... So, you might need to go down the hall.
Yep, we'll see. Claire, Claire Bird.
I have a couple of comments to relay from the Board of Trustees. Thank you for taking the time to hear and consider the community's input on this matter. I feel that every effort should be made to continue the counseling contract with Heritage Health. Mental health support and professional health not only benefits the students and families that work with counselors, but the staff of our district gains additional support as well. We all want the best for our schools, and I believe that providing every available beneficial resource to the students and teachers is essential. And national statistics show that this is a resource that is indeed essential. Our children, their classmates, teammates, neighbors, and friends all benefit from the strong support system that includes accessible mental health care. Thank you for your efforts on their behalf. Next is Karen Brooks.
Good evening. My name is Karen Brooks, and although I am a district employee, this evening I am Karen Brooks, the mother of a high school student that utilizes Heritage Health's counseling services. Psychoanalytic seizure disorder, OCD tendencies, depression, and anxiety. These are my son's diagnoses. Hospital stays, evaluations, phone calls, and appointments. That has been in the last four years of his life. Searching and begging for help and resources to support us through all of his mental health problems. The one commonality to all of the tests, appointments, and conversations is counseling. A safe person and a safe place to help my son navigate through his mental health and to learn skills to help him have a successful, functioning life without self-harm. As a single parent, I am the sole provider for my family. Food, shelter, health care, education, et cetera. Heritage Health allowed me the opportunity to provide financially without worrying about getting my son to the counseling he so desperately needed. He not only gets to speak to a licensed professional who is familiar with his diagnoses, but he isn't missing out on any school academics, and I don't have to leave work to get him to any appointments. However, now I am riddled with overwhelming stress about how I might balance my priorities with Heritage Health out of the school. I will be forced to choose. Do I work to provide financially for my family? Or will I leave work to take my son to necessary mental health appointments? A decision no parent should have to make. The schedule conflict is not the only problem. Finding a counselor that is familiar with specific aspects of someone's mental health is extremely important. Just as important as a person establishing a good rapport with that counselor so that he feels safe enough to open up and do the work needed to help themselves. After spending weeks establishing said relationships and little by little chipping away making progress, my son's counselor may no longer be available to him. The heavy weight of suicide has affected everyone in our community one way or another. My only brother committed suicide after years of struggling with his own mental health, literally begging the hospital in his last days to help him. He was turned away and out at the end of his story and the end of his life. Now I have a son who struggles with similar mental health issues, but the difference is that my son has been getting the help that my brother never did. Now, though, even that is being taken away. So, could the school board's current decision be attributable to our community's next tragedy? When will the desperate cry for help be taken seriously? My son's story isn't special, and it's not out of the ordinary. It is, however, real and familiar. So, I stand before you tonight begging the school board to please reconsider their decision regarding Heritage Health's case.
Thank you. Next person is Molly Bond. Did she attend?
Yes. Hello.
Hi.
Thank you for taking the time to hear us. First of all, I wanted to introduce you to my beautiful, intelligent, kind, wonderful, and most importantly, happy and really compassionate Ella. I live in Lakeland Middle School, and it was rough. When we entered seventh grade, it was a really dark period. It was more than fine, thank you, because my own child was depressed and suicidal. And as her mother, I couldn't fix it. So, we entered seventh grade, and luckily, our story, it's going to come there because our school counselor referred us to Heritage Health. And she has this wonderful counselor named Tammy Young. But we tried to bridge this on our own. We reached out to every place that we could, and we were told that it was couldn't be seen for anywhere between two months and six months. And that was at our own expense, which was tremendous. It wasn't about the money. It was about the time we couldn't get around. So, here we entered seventh grade, and we were preferred, and we were able to get her a counselor within three days. And that is when our story started to take a turn. With time, Ella, we saw a wonderful change in her. For one thing, she went from failing almost every class to A's and B's. She found her happiness again. She changed so much because she developed skills and was able to cope with some depression and climb her way out of the dark hole to the center. So, today, we're here to speak for a lot of people who couldn't be here. We feel that it is so important that mental health is addressed in the school because we're all here because we believe that no child should be left behind. So, we have a child, can't function, can't learn. And we turn our back on them, and we don't have the ability for them to be seen and helped because let's face it, our teachers and our school counselors are already terribly, terribly overtaxed. If we don't provide those resources or make them available, then in essence, turn our back on the child and their family and our community because we're all affected by a child's mental health. The fact that this could even be considered, given that we live in a time where there are still shootings that happen. We can't necessarily keep guns out of our schools, but we can normalize mental health. We can help children. We can also help other kids like Ella come out of the darkness. And for us, although you might say, "Well, we don't even need this service anymore." Well, that's like saying to, you know, an Olympic athlete, "You know, you're in pretty good shape. I don't think you need to exercise anymore." For us, we know that continuing help and support and treatment and counseling and realizing that therapy isn't just for people who are in a really bad spot. I think that's really important.
I'm sorry, you've extended your three minutes, and I do appreciate that.
Okay, so what do I need to say? Thank you.
Thank you. That was the one. We don't have to, but it helps keep us on the three-minute track. Uh, move, next is Heather Hamilton. Copy of our district's spreadsheet. Please.
My name is Heather Hamilton. I'm the elementary school counselor at Apple Elementary School. I also oversee our suicide prevention efforts and as well as our Heritage Health services. The spreadsheet I provided to you is our district community tracking spreadsheet that has on it all the amount of students that are being served by Heritage Health, how many are on waitlist, how many suicide protocols we have, how many psychiatric hospitalizations. I'm willing to be speaking to this, and I want you to be able to view it as well. If you're not able to view it due to protocol, I understand. First and foremost, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. On behalf of my entire counseling team and any who are in the audience, we respectfully ask that you reconsider the decision for approving the Heritage Health MOU for the next school year. Even though the rotoscope of our student population, seventy-eight students, may seem rather insignificant, but to put this in perspective, that would be equivalent to all of my first grade classrooms at Apple Elementary School and one of our kindergarten, uh, one of our kindergarten classrooms. So, I want you to envision that this room has three first grade classrooms and one kindergarten. Now, I want you to imagine that we, each one of those children has a mental illness. Each one of those students is being served by Heritage Health. And now we know that we're going to be taking this necessary service away. When you look at it in that perspective, it has a very immense impact on their learning and our overall systems and our politics. What we've seen with our students is that when we don't give them the mental health services they need, they're not able to learn. Whether it's due to lack of instruction, missing class time, or they're just not able to access the content because of their current mental status. In addition to that, some of these symptoms can exacerbate and result in suicidal behavior tendencies as well as become severe disruptions in the classroom. I assure you that my team and I have every confidence in our partnership with Heritage Health. We feel that these services have been well utilized, well implemented. These therapists are highly trained, highly skilled, and they can't speak enough about their professionalism. If you have any further questions or concerns regarding what this looks like in our buildings, we have representation from our high school, our middle school, and our other elementary schools as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next is Craig Thiero, Lorraine Ryan, and James Go.
One letter just to write to the record.
All right.
Dear School Board, on behalf of our students and parents, we respectfully ask that you please keep Lakeland School District's relationship with Heritage Health. The service they provide is added to the safety and order of our school. There are fourteen Lakeland High School students currently on our Heritage Health counselors' case load, which is 1.6% of our student population. The need, the needs of this small group of students is beyond the scope of the service, services that a school counselor is able to provide. No student is seen by a Heritage Health counselor without parent consent. Parents sign a release allowing Heritage Health to meet with the students, and the parent also meets with the Heritage Health counselor to complete an intake form prior to any service. Parents express great appreciation for the ease of connecting their child to the proper help at a critical time in life. Their student becomes more prepared for learning when their mental health needs are treated. The convenience of these students getting necessary help while at school is what really allows this program to work. The counseling session entails thirty minutes, once per week, and is targeted at specific times of the day, which will not interfere with core classes. The interruption is minimal, and the benefit to learning is great. Building space is not a concern in regards to Heritage Health services at LHS. The meeting occurs in a space that is not needed by anyone else on those days. It is an efficient process, and students are excited... Excuse me, students are exited from services once counseling goals are met. Prior to this service being available at school, these students were often untreated due to the lack of availability of mental health counselors in the community, transportation, or scheduling challenges. Students who see mental health counselors outside of school often miss out on two to three class periods. The quality of mental health counselors that Lakeland School District is working with is a rare find. These professionals are highly regarded by us as school counselors, and we have full trust in their ability to provide the best care for our students. We see the direct results. We have less emotional crises happening and improved academic rates. Emotional crises equals missed class time and brings a sense of chaos to our school environment. We see students going from desperately searching in unhealthy ways to being hopeful and having positive coping mechanisms for life. They have, or they become more functional in school and in life, which benefits not only the student, but also their community. We appreciate you giving us the chance to voice our solid support for this service. We strongly believe that our Lakeland community is better because of this service. We would be honored to address any concerns or questions.
Next, we have Erin Sax, Megan McCouster, and Ali Neiman.
We have arrested Karen as well.
Dear Lakeland Board of Trustees and members of our community, thank you for taking the time to hear our view on recent decisions to not renew the MOU of Heritage Health. Below are some discussion points on how this denial will affect us, the building staff, our students using the service, as well as families and our community. We want students in their classes for the maximum amount of time. Our job as school counselors is to use brief, solution-focused counseling to help students compartmentalize certain issues that may keep them from being able to absorb and understand instruction. While we are able to handle meeting situations and keep our students academically centered, there are situations that are outside our scope of care and need to be addressed by and with a trained professional, a therapist. Our job is to communicate any issues outside of our scope with parents and then refer them for therapy as necessary. When students are identified as needing a referral, having access to Heritage Health, keep students from missing more class time than necessary. In most cases, students who attend outside therapy during the school day can lose up to two hours or more of instruction time and/or don't return to school for the day. Heritage Health being in the building is time-efficient and minimizes students missing instruction. We have a significant lack of resources in our area. To compound this, many agencies only accept certain insurances. We have a number of students who are on Medicaid or private pay. Providers who accept Medicaid or payment on a sliding scale are extremely challenging to find. Heritage Health provides both of these services and comes directly to our location. A student who has to attempt to get on the waitlist for Heritage Health outside of school now has to now be a first come, first served calling system, requiring a daily phone call to try and secure an appointment. Prior to the system, the waitlist was several hundred people. This is a hardship to our families who are working, unable to sit by the phone to get a counseling appointment. Some agencies are six months out in accepting new referrals. Families are most often the driving force behind referring students, and all students are required to have parental consent to access their services. In addition, parents can discontinue care at any time. We receive phone calls frequently from parents who are anxious to get their students additional support and cannot find a resource in the area to meet their needs. As school counselors supporting our students, families, and teachers is our main goal. Having this resource to provide for families who ask is a direct added value to our school district.
Okay, was it?
No.
Okay, good. Thank you. While it may seem like there are a large number of students, this impacts between our two district middle schools. We currently have sixteen total students accessing these services. As a result of their brief but consistent thirty-minute therapy sessions, behaviors and, most importantly, their academic success are impaired. This provides us the ability to focus on other students needing our assistance with their academic success. Finally... Time? Okay, well, I did kind of distract it. Finally, the Heritage Health therapists continue care throughout the summer when we are not available. This continues the continuity of care. This continuity, continuity of care is an essential safety net during the months when you're unable to provide services. Next, we have Brenda Case. D. Case, or Brenda Case. D. is the next person.
Good morning. I saw the article in which Lakeland plans to not renew the no-cost contract with Heritage Health. My understanding is this contract allows to free counseling for students. I am ready to express my disapproval of this action and ask that the board reconsider this. As the surviving spouse of a husband who took his life via suicide, I can't express how important it is to have this service in place. The amount of suicides that have taken place in our school, our schools just since 2017 is devastating. And if having this service in place saves even one life, we win. I don't know any details about this reprogram and how much it has been used or not used, but I do know the impact suicide has on families and the community. Mental health is not addressed enough, and the resources aren't always easily obtained. Taking away this free option, in my opinion, is a huge disservice to our community and children.
Next is D. Jeremy, who is not attending.
Uh, good afternoon. I am unable to attend the special meeting of the board taking place tomorrow, Thursday, April twenty, twenty-three. I would like to submit the comment below to be read during public input. I apologize that I cannot attend in person, but thank you for entertaining my written comments in my absence. This is in regards to the decision to not renew the no-cost contract with Heritage Health as discussed at the April tenth review board meeting. The CDC recently published the youth risk behavior survey data for 2011 through 2019. The report underlines exactly why counseling services such as those provided by Heritage Health are needed. Trends around mental health and suicidality among youth are going in the wrong direction. Some alarming facts to highlight. Nearly all indicators of poor mental health and suicidal thoughts and behaviors increased from 2011 to 2021. A staggering three in five, or fifty-seven percent, teen girls felt persistently sad or helpless in 2021, representing a sixty percent increase and the highest level reported in the last ten years. One in three, or thirty percent, seriously considered suicide, up to sixty percent from a decade ago. While these stats are national, I believe they are representative of our adolescents here in North Idaho. That is why it is more important than ever to make it easier for our children and their families to participate in these services they need, not harder. During the discussion at the April tenth meeting, the only articulated concern was the physical space Heritage Health is occupying, which Superintendent Wilson replied back that the services were not imposing on any in-used classroom or instruction space. I believe that without further reasoning to deny this service, it is necessary to reevaluate the benefits of this highly in-demand service, and I urge you to reconsider or find another comparable solution. The decision to remove the accessibility of these counseling services could prove to be a matter of life or death, and most certainly will have repercussions that impact the entire community. Thank you.
Next is Nat Cade. Requested a letter to be read out loud earlier.
Hello, I'm writing this letter to discuss what I feel is a great mistake on the district's part by terminating the Heritage Health program. My daughter sees one of the counselors currently, and she has shown great progress in the years she has spent with him. The issue that was brought up was facility reasons, but from the few times we have family sessions or the one thirty-minute session a week my daughter has been in, in an unoccupied room that isn't in use during those times. To terminate this program would do a great disservice to all the kids these counselors help on a daily, weekly basis. There has been talk about letting outside counselors into the building and the cost of the district for these meetings, but it's coming out of parents' insurance and bills like a normal therapy session would. But this provides a time and place that makes it easier on full-time working parents and a very busy child's schedule filled such as track after school each day. I would selfishly hate to see my daughter lose the progress she's made as well as all the other students these professionals are helping overusing an empty, already unused room. Please consider reversing the decision for the sake of all of our children's mental and emotional health. Thank you.
Next, we have Kim Tachau.
Tachau.
Tachau. Thank you.
That was close. Can I stand here?
Please.
Thank you very much for letting me come to speak tonight, first off. My name is Kim Tachau, and I am a parent whose children go to Timberlake High School. Dear Board Member... Dear Board members, I was surprised to hear your decision asking Heritage Health Counseling to discontinue the use of our schools for a purpose of providing counseling to our children in need of assistance. I am not sure of your objections to this program. It costs a school no money and only a small area for meeting with a counselor. My daughter attends Timberlake High School and sees Sierra Swift, a counselor who works for Heritage weekly at her school. About a year ago, she started to really struggle with school, and many of us, including her counselor, Renee Gordahl, became very concerned about her. I'm a nurse and recognize my daughter's need for professional help. I tried all avenues to get her help that she needed. There are limited numbers of therapists in our area, and even a smaller amount that see young adults. My daughter went from a vibrant life, sorry, life, excuse me, living life to the fullest, excellent leader and student in her school, as well as a top athlete to the shelf of person that no longer could even find the simplest enjoyment in life. Renee assisted me in getting in touch with Sierra to assess her mental health needs. No one else in the counseling world could see us since they were booked out for over two months. Everyone wanted to help us, but no one had room to see us. We even saw our pediatrician, and they couldn't even help us. My husband and I met with Sierra twice and spoke on the phone before she even spoke to our daughter. She is a certified counselor, and all interactions were conducted in a professional manner. We really believe Sierra saved our daughter's life. My daughter, excuse me, still sees her weekly, and we see the daughter we used to know. She finds enjoyment in her daily living now. She enjoys school and has good grades. She's also involved in sports again and has become leader of her peers again. She still struggles at times, and we continue counseling for this reason. Through the partnership of counselors at Timberlake and Heritage, we were able to get my daughter the help she needs. This is an invaluable program needed by our young people. Not only is my daughter able to see a licensed professional, but only this is a small amount of school. If we end this agreement between us and Heritage, my daughter will miss three hours each week of school to be able to see a counselor. I do not believe any of us, but think this is a good idea. I urge you to rescind your decision to not allow Heritage to come to our schools. Our young people need this opportunity. Please don't take this away from them. Stand by our shelter and help provide any assistance that they need to succeed in this crazy world. And one thing, too, that I'd like everyone to just consider is, I talked to Heritage, and they said that we have like eighty to ninety kids in this program in any given time. And what would any of us feel like if one of those children, if we dropped this program, and one of those children harms themselves, or worse even, harms someone else? It's a super important program, and I really wish that you would reconsider taking this out of our schools. Thank you so much for giving me the chance.
Next is Jacqueline Myers.
Hello, my name is Jacqueline Myers. I'm a resident of Raff from the number of three children in the Lakeland Joint School District. I also here represent the Lakeland Parents Rising Education Group comprised of many local parents and community members. Tonight, I want to recognize that there are a lot of feelings about the decision that was made, and I've been very moved by the testimony of people here tonight. And I get that this is a very complex issue, and I wanted to point out some of the things that I see as a parent that I do have concerns with, with the program, just to kind of bring some of those to people's attention or to your attention as a board. Do we want government entities having excessive control and influence over the welfare of our children? Or should that right responsibility lie with the parents? I wonder if there are any concerns about where programs like this in our public schools can lead? Why stop the counseling? Students need medical care also. Let's put full health centers in the schools like they are doing in Washington, Oregon, and California. Let's make sure our kids are provided with access to doctors for convenient birth control, side effect facility, and assistance, et cetera. Or better yet, let's bless kids nearby facilities for COVID vaccines. All of these things were happening in school districts that I had my kids in previously. This is a real concern of mine, of just the simple result and where this can lead. And I appreciate that you're taking all points into consideration with this. I also want to express my concern about the inappropriate endorsement from the school with this type of arrangement it suggests. If you've ever participated in counseling, you've likely found that all counselors are not the same. Some are great, some are not so good, some are just not a good fit for that particular person. Having the school sponsor this practice is a bit misleading for parents. Is anyone vetting the counselors? Are the counselors beholden to district policy? Do we know for sure what their agenda is and how that will be manifested? How well do parents really understand what they are assigning their children out for? I absolutely understand that this is a complex issue and that you, as a board, are taking into account many different factors. I appreciate that these decisions are made with careful consideration. The accusations that are being targeted at the board, not just tonight, but from other things that I've seen on social media and whatnot, are hurtful and reactionary. I don't think anyone is saying that kids whose parents agree need counseling shouldn't get it, but it should, but it should be managed and provided by the parents. This is not the intended function of our taxpayer-funded public schools. Thank you for your time and consideration.
And next is Hannah Mahara.
Hi, Hannah. I have three children that go to Lakeland School District, and I'm a single working mother, cannot have time to prepare something as eloquent as everybody else. But at some point in time, all three of my children have participated in this program, and I have seen the benefits that have come from that, as everybody else up here has testified to their stories and the benefits that come. And the transparency and openness that we have with the counselors to discuss those issues and have those conversations is absolutely wonderful, and the lessons our children have learned. They've learned how to express themselves and ask for help when they need it. And I think that, I never thought my children would make that. And like everybody else has said, the resources in the community are very slim. I have literally helped every counselor in the book. Either they won't take our children because they're too young, or they don't have openings, and to have this opportunity for the kids that need it and kids that don't have the ability to be transported out, to go to a different hospital, because their parents have to work. They shouldn't have to choose between working and providing for their child or getting the mental health care that they need. It is a great program that you have. And some other person mentioned the summer program that they did. We also participated in that, and they provided transportation for the children who needed that, that could come. And my children love, absolutely love to have the ability to go talk to somebody else. We have very open dialogue in our home, that we talk about everything, but to have somebody else that they can go and talk to and find different tools that I'm available to provide is an invaluable resource, and it's not just for my children, it's for everyone in the entire district. And for that to be handled and to not be provided is detrimental to everybody. And I think everybody here, the community, says the same thing, and everybody else has said it way more eloquently than I have, but the message is the same. This program is needed, it's beneficial, and it will hurt not only the students who are in it, but the other ones that are being prevented from learning or will be negatively affected by different actions.
Next is Jackie Lee.
Heritage Health in our schools. In my visit to the Raff Room offices, I was forced to wear a mask or not come in. The staff and the doctors treated me with obvious disdain for older Americans. The doctor asked inappropriate questions, marked my file with anti-bacter. I strongly feel this company is woke and should not be influencing our kids.
Next is Teresa Bornpool.
This is actually on the Lakeland levy, and it says, please champion tech education. I am so impressed by the access Coopin County students have to technical education in high school. As you know, K-Tech is funded as a partnership between Post Falls Portland and Lakeland. If any levies fail, we will exclude technical education for all school districts.
Mike Baker.
Hello, how are you?
Mike.
Am I supposed to do anything? I was outside.
That's fine.
So you invited us in. Sounds good. My name is Mike Baker. I'm the CEO at Heritage Health. Just happy to be here. Again, I really just thanks for the opportunity to be part of this community for such a long time. It gives you all know, we're just trying to make life better for people wherever you go. I love community dialogue and conversations. We're just happy to be part of whatever conversation that this community needs to have. You know, I think you probably heard lots of the impact of the number of things that this program has done. It was, it was really cool to start, so we started in 2013 with our mobile unit, providing medical services within the school. It was just neat to see the different things that happened as relationships formed between our staff and the teachers and within the district. It was just really neat to see all of the good that can come when people take a problem and come together and try to solve that. And so, you know, our, we're going to continue to provide services for the community. We want to be a part of it. If there's, if that's part of being here in the school district, absolutely, we'd love to continue that. We also, we don't want to be a hotbed issue. I believe that mental health is a really important thing that we all need to focus on. I think we have tremendous staff that every time you meet with a client, there's a part of your soul that you share with them. And I think that's why a mental health therapist has such a difficult job, because you see people going through a lot of really challenging things, and they have to go on with their life, too, and figure out how to, how to make the world a better place. We're just so lucky to have the amazing team that we have, and that they've been incredibly honored to be a part of this process up here. So we're always around, and we'd love to answer questions if there was any misunderstandings or anything that we weren't doing, you know, as far as the contract that we could do better. We're happy to do that. You know, my, my phone's always on, and we're happy to answer any questions we go have, so I'll be good with that. Thank you.
Next is Amber Kessler.
I'm Amber Kessler. I am a parent. I currently have four children, all of whom are currently students in the Lakeland School District. Last summer, one of my children had a pediatrician consult that resulted in the referral to a mental health specialist. The pediatrician's office was at lunch and said there was a list of places. We can only refer you to one, call around and see who has the student's appointment. I didn't even get a call back from half of them, the waitlist was so hard. We didn't place on one. That was last summer. I still haven't gotten a call. When school started, my child began having concerning behavior. He was consuming a lot of the school staff's time with his behavioral issues, as well as putting himself in a student's at risk. Initially, I was told there was an option, possibly refer to Heritage Health, where he would be able to see a counselor once a week while at school. Of course, I had to fill out a consent packet, verify my insurance, and have the intake session with the counselor. I was thrilled how quickly we were able to get a meeting with him, as well as not having to take time off of work or for my child to miss a hot day at school in order to pull him out. I have self-work, as well as my husband is a truck driver, so he doesn't have the ease of just leaving work for an appointment as some parents may or may not have. My child, somebody died of COVID, kid, his kindergarten year was here, all kids were pulled from school, and had to try to figure out everything at home. I was an essential worker, so I was unable to be home with him every day, helping him with his letters, numbers, and cybers, the setting back before he could leave and started. The schools are now filled with whole re-levels that are struggling due to COVID setbacks and those behavioral issues for him as well. Having such a huge gap in time where lives are put on hold and social interactions are severely limited have its consequences, which is causing significant strain on our school staff as they try to counteract those effects. One of the things I noted and really appreciated was during the intake discussion, the counselor already knew the dynamics of my son's classroom. He already knew some of the other students, he already knew the teacher, he already knew the principal. And so, with treatment, being able to kind of take those things in consideration and how to work with my son, get him the right tools, what the right personalities he was working with, everything ended up working out very well. In addition to the benefit of my child having their permits on campus, being tremendous, not only did I not have to take off work or pull my child from school for longer than necessary, but this also meant that he wouldn't spend an unknown amount of time waiting in a waiting room. As you know, appointments tend to go over. This helped for the counselor to be able to pull my student as soon as he was ready to see him, with limited impact on his school day. He was already suffering from all his behavioral issues. He was already suffering with his classing being denied. I now have another child with different concerning behaviors that I feel have also benefited tremendously from this program, and I'm really heartbroken that the school district did not renew the contract. While I don't understand the red tape that may or may not be involved in this, I plead with the board to work with Heritage Health in renewing this contract, not only for my children, but for others in the district that may need services such as these. We all know that youth mental health crisis is on the rise across the country, but especially here in the Pacific Northwest, where we have our weather-related fire danger deficiency affecting to tribute. In addition to the effects of the COVID shutdown on our kids, when a child dies from self-harm, we as parents often wonder what we could have done and as a community. We want to know what the schools and the community could have done as well. So quite frankly, having a frontline advocate like us, such as this, is imperative for the children of our community. So, as in the words of Frank Shirley, things might look at on paper, but you need to get in the circle of our own and see other actual people. Thank you.
Nikki Arenna.
Hello, my name is Nikki Arenna. I am a property owner and resident of Raff Room, Idaho. I am a community member who is greatly concerned about Lakeland Joint School District continuing with a contractual relationship with Heritage Health. Before writing this public comment, I called Heritage Health and asked them about the services they offer through the Lakeland schools. They confirmed to me that they offer counseling to students, including social-emotional learning principles and practices. One of the overarching principles of the SEL movement is that it eventually be implemented through all public schools, then in the personal lives of the students, and eventually in the society that these children create as they mature into productive members of society. The problem with social-emotional learning methods is that there are no studies of the long-term outcomes of this method of indoctrination on the children and on our society. The definition of SEL is, SEL is the process through which all young people and adults acquire and apply the knowledge, skills, and attitudes to develop healthy identities, manage emotions, and achieve personal and collective goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain supportive relationships, and make responsible and caring decisions. What does this mean? Who will define healthy identities or the collective goals? For example, if you research the framework of this ideology, you will find that one of the collective goals is to establish equitable learning environments. The term equity means that an equal outcome is produced. Everyone who is indoctrinated have the same attitudes, identities, and goals. I can only touch on all the harmful outcomes of this ideology. Most of us are aware of the negative effects of the current progressive left agenda in our schools. our schools. No one should encourage this progressive left agenda be implemented in the Lakeland School District until they have thoroughly investigated the outcomes in schools across the nation who naively embraced it. One highly respected resource on this subject, Catherine Estlestone, wrote a compelling book, "The Dangerous Rise of Therapeutic Education," using a wealth of examples across the education system from primary schools to university, and the workplace to show how therapeutic education is turning children and young people and adults into anxious and self-preoccupied individuals rather than aspiring, optimistic, and resilient learners who want to know everything about the world. Thank you for this opportunity to comment.
Next, we have Nate DePutter.
I don't think I will be able to make it out today, but I have the following comment. When did schools become mental health clinics? This is not their job. I'm particularly disturbed that the service provided by Heritage Health is psychotherapy. There's a reason why psychology has a repeatedly crisis in the... There's a reason why psychology has a repeatability crisis in the professional journals, and there's a reason why the percentage of the population that is licensed to practice psychology is positively correlated with the national suicide rate. The reason is that while there are truths to discover in psychology, it is functionally a pseudoscience. It does more harm than good. Keep it away from my kids, please.
Clay Myers?
To the board, as I have told you before, I appreciate the decision to let the relationship with Heritage Health lapse. The more I learn about that outfit, the happier I am with your decision. I do not think our schools should be providing these types of services. I have experienced public schools in a different state and was a witness to the unyielding growth of the bureaucracy and the undermining of parental authority. There are plenty of resources available outside of the schools, including Heritage Health. I don't think it is wise. I don't think it is wise to broaden the school's purview. Thank you.
Ken Moss? Is Ken Moss in the hallway? Would you like to take the podium?
Will we all be standing?
Stand.
I stand here before you confront this board with complete respect, first off. Thank you for the duties you do. I also stand here because I feel, as I've heard to the room here, it's a lot of concern for mental health in this area. And I think that in so many ways, we want this issue to go away, but it's not going to go away. It's going to get bigger. COVID caused a lot. We've seen it. I've got four boys that live with us, two grandkids, two that I've brought from families that were ruined. And I can tell you that two of them, one is autistic, one of them has about everything on the list that they can medically devise to put a title on. And without the help of Heritage in the background, we would have never made it. And those kids would never have made it through what we've had to bear. So I think that this community needs what it has set in place already. I think this community also needs to have the respect for what's been going on. I can tell you that I've got one boy that I've been trying to get into exterior counseling other than Heritage, along with, and for eight months I've been told because they're on Medicaid that they're on a list. And the list, I can give you an example. I put a title on it. The one time, we were number two on the list. The next month, when I sent another message in, we were at 200. So there's no respect of who's in line next. It's a ruined system. And I was told by one of the counseling services that it's getting worse. We don't have the people to cover what's coming in. So we desperately need what's set in place now. Thank you.
Allison McClellan?
One in six U.S. youth aged six to 17 years old experience a mental health disorder each year, and half of all the mental health conditions begin at the age of 14. Attention, ADHD, behavior problems, anxiety, depression are the most commonly diagnosed mental disorders in children. Yet, about half of the youth with mental health conditions received any kind of treatment in the past year. Undiagnosed, untreated, or inadequately treated mental health illnesses can significantly interfere with a student's ability to learn, grow, and develop. Since children spend much of their productive time in educational settings, schools offer a unique opportunity for early identification, prevention, and interventions that serve students where they already are. Early treatment is effective and can help young people stay in school and on track to achieving their life goals. In fact, the earlier the treatment, the better the outcomes and lower the cost. Untreated or inadequately treated mental illness can lead to high rates of school dropouts, unemployment, substance abuse, arrest, incarceration, and early death. School-linked mental health services like the relationship with Heritage Health reduce barriers to youth and families getting needed treatment and support communities. When we invest in children's mental health to make sure that they can get the right care at the right time, we improve the lives of our children, the youth, and families, and our communities. This school year alone, one school in our neighboring district had two teen suicides. One is too many. One of those was my son's best friend. And when he tried, when his family tried to get the help at Quarterlane High School, their list was too long. He couldn't get on it. And there was nowhere in town that he could be seen. So Caleb found a different way out. Why are you taking this opportunity away? I have yet to hear a valid reason. Both of my kids used this opportunity with Sierra. One had to be on a waiting list before they could get in. That should tell you how needed and vital they are to keep this for our children. Please, please, please keep them coming. It is no cost to the district, and our children, and our health and wellness is vital to their education. And for those who say we as parents don't vet these people, yes, we do. Yes, we do. I had my own conversation with Sierra. And she is her, my husband and I vetted the whole system. And we've been going to Heritage Health for a long time. So for people to say that we haven't done that, that's disrespectful. Thank you.
Next is Juliana Aldrich. Wants the her comment read. The contract with Heritage Health to allow students to access to needed counseling and therapy was approved by the school board on July 13th, 2002. This program is only minimal effort to school staff and space and not a strain on the budget. So little effort is a no-brainer to help students' mental health and should be a priority. It will enhance their ability to be safe and productive in our community, as well as ensure their own learning and development as proud members of our society. Why, why, why would you get rid? Why, why, why would you get in the way of students receiving what they need when it does no harm to district? However, students not receiving what they need for mental health can absolutely bring harm to our community, our students, teachers, and create widespread difficulties for schools. Please bring this up again in a board meeting and reinstate the program's continuums. Doing so would show that you are taking action to fulfill the board's mission statement. And... Dusik?
Anita Dusik, community member. Good evening Superintendent Arnold, Chairman Thompson, and Trustees. Thank you for your decision not to rejoin the NYU with Heritage Health. Lakeland's 2022-23 Board Approved Operational Plan states that Lakeland is committed to providing an exemplary education to the families of our district. Over the years, we've seen a blurring of the line between academics and the social welfare of children. While Heritage Health has many valuable resources, a quick look at their affiliations and grantors show an alignment with diversity, equity, and inclusion, and their public support of the North Idaho Pride Alliance and CBA for Pride Games Social. What assurance do parents have, or do parents or the district have, that these ideas or beliefs are not being shared with students as they have been, as they are being seen on Lakeland campuses? There is a battle going on for the minds of our children. And unless schools do their job, which is to teach students how to reason, research, read, and understand, to help them make informed decisions that will impact their future, they very well may end up being discouraged and depressed. Thank you.
Lauren Baumann?
To the school board, I am writing in concerns to the Heritage Health counselors. I am distraught to hear the board is considering removing Heritage Health counselors from our schools. I am a guest teacher in the district, so I know Tim Young professionally, but please consider this as an email from a concerned parent. Tim has been seeing my children for two years. He has had a profound impact on them. I was unable to find a counselor who would see them around my work hours or who had availability to see them. My children needed the professional support of a licensed counselor. Tim has given them and myself coping strategies and helped us all function better as a family. Tim has had the same impact at families I know personally. And this is multiplied over all of the schools in our district by Tim and the other Heritage Health staff. This has been a blessing to our district. The students who would be most affected are often high-risk. This support could help them lifelong. Is it our goal as educators and parents to set out our children, to set our children up to be successful throughout their lives? These children will grow up, and I want them to be well-adjusted, happy, and contributing members of society. I felt strongly, without Heritage Health, any of these students cannot do that. This is a way our district can have life, can have long-reaching health in our community. I am pleading with you all to do this for our kids. They need this. They can't advocate for themselves. So as a parent and concerned citizen, I am making my opinion known. Thank you for hearing me out.
Last is Amy Bishop. Let go. And there's one more after Amy. No? Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Amy Bishop. I have three kids in Lakeland District from 2007 to current. I wasn't aware before the CBA press that the service offered from Heritage Health are in danger of being discontinued. I have a child who was having severe anxiety, which include things like tantrums in the morning in preparation for school. She had issues with clothing textures and tightness and shoes. She had anxiety and eating issues from being the tallest girl who had been called fat, who decided she didn't want to eat while at school. She wouldn't let me bring B-day treats in or have her name announced due to people looking at her. She had test anxiety and also became angry because of frustration with schoolwork she didn't understand. She felt dumb and fat and wanted to be invisible. The saddest part is that she was eight. We talked to her pediatrician. We read books on parenting to help and listened to podcasts. In the end, the doctor agreed it was time to seek more help. The major problem we had was with all the people in our area, we only could join long waiting lists. We got on list for occupation therapy and talked to Mrs. Lidsco about recommendations. We were told with amount of students, it's too hard to do one-on-one counseling in a school setting, which I understood. She told us that Heritage Health offers a small caseload at the school and had me reach out to them. Long story short, we filled out all the paperwork and met at school with Mr. Tim Young. He was great at listening to our concerns. And while my daughter initially felt uncomfortable, she understood we all wanted her to just feel better about life. She received counseling for the entire school year and even attended some summer sessions he held at John Brown Elementary. We had no meetings with school. We had no meetings with school, didn't require school to fill out papers. School didn't pay for our services. Her insurance did. I saw huge improvements in so many aspects of her life. And while it may never be perfect, we can do things in a much better way without such anxiety. She eats at school and no longer has tantrums. She will become, she still becomes frustrated when she doesn't understand things, but that's expected in all kids' mornings. I'm frankly appalled at the thought of something possibly being taken from families like ours that benefited greatly. In a say, when our young people have more issues they deal with, we should be asking for more resources, not taking them away. One person said it was my job to teach my kid how to deal, but as a parent of three, sometimes we need professional help, and this was our only way of receiving it at the time. Please consider who this hurts by getting rid of the program. Our kids will be adults one day, and we only want them to navigate life in the best way they can. We want outstanding citizens. We want to help the peers maybe distracted by certain behaviors. We want teachers to focus their attention on learning about math and reading, et cetera.
And last is Jessica Studer.
I have three children, boy, girl, boy. So as you can imagine, that middle girl is, she's a good one. She's spicy. We have been on a list for almost two years to get into another counseling program. We finally did get into one, and it was, you get the slot that we have. So I have no problem pulling my child out to go to these appointments. I'm sure that you'd rather them be here as I would, but she has them, it was every two weeks. Now she gets them every week. And she talks to me more. She tells me things more often. She's not as spicy. I think that we should definitely keep this service. My oldest son did it when we landed families. And we all went together. We came to the school during the summer, and we did these programs together. I think they are very helpful.
That concludes the public comment. Go ahead and enter into discussion.
I would first of all congratulate all the folks who are here this evening. Showing your concern about this program, the parents who I was hoping to tonight did it far more eloquently, probably than most of us could in many instances. So I really appreciate the effort coming from the... What I heard tonight confirmed what I believed early on about the approach to the program. A couple of other things that came forward, I think, pretty clearly is that the parents really are in control of this. The school district is simply a conduit to provide opportunity for service. Parents decide whether or not they want the service. They go through the intake process and decide whether or not to move forward from there. So it's not as if, you know, we're doing something, we as a school district are doing something in this arena. I think the important aspect of that is we have a lot of good school counselors who do a great job, but some of these things... But some of these things are, you know, beyond their, their level of service expertise and the time that's available in dealing with so many other kids in school. So if we can, the real bottom line is if we can help kids function better, their academic progress is going to be better as well. And I think, you know, providing the opportunity for kids to go through that is very helpful.
I have to agree with Bob that, you know, that tonight definitely solidified my original thought. If we can keep one kid safe, it's worth it. Yeah, that's, that's my opinion. Well, I'm glad we're finding out this. We've been asking for quite some time. And we've been kept in the dark and allowed access to this information, which has been extremely frustrating to understand the value of this program within our district when we're not provided with any data. It's not that we're asking for names. We're just trying to find out how many kids are actually being serviced. Is it equitable for the students across the district, or is it only equitable for a small few? Which by the sounds of it, you know, it is a minority population, but the population's not in the minority. There's a vast number of kids that need apparently mental health services and we're only able to provide it to a small few. I wish people could be this passionate about their children's education. I really do. Or curriculum. I mean, it would be great if people were this passionate about the curriculum that we need to put in front of the children. I mean, it's, it's challenging. One of the things we usually do before we make decisions is we survey the patrons of the district, and we didn't do that one this time. You know, we've, why say we, talking about Ramona and I. You know, we found out about Heritage Health being in the district in 2021, I believe. And discovered that they've been in the district for quite some time, and the board didn't even know about it. So, and then trying to get information to really understand what's going on before we just say, what's going on? You know, trying to keep things cruising along as they were. It's just very frustrating. The whole process is frustrating. And I have doubt that there is a growing mental health crisis within our communities. But we are a school. We're not a mental health hospital. So that's where it becomes even more challenging, because it's supposed to be about the academics. And as we know, we have low test scores. We lose staff because of behaviors. So obviously something's not working. No matter how many services we're, we're trying to help parents so that they don't have to leave school and the kids don't have to miss class time, we're still losing staff because of behaviors. So where's the problem? Is this really the only solution there is?
Maybe not, but it is at least a step in the right direction. It is...
A step in the right direction? What direction?
To helping...
To helping the kids. Okay. Some kids.
Everyone matters. Every kid matters.
You're right. Every child does matter. I agree, wholeheartedly. But what we've heard tonight is that's not an option. When you have long lists... When you have long lists and it's not, you can't, you can choose who you service.
What I, what I heard though is, you know, the really long lists are from the independent county...
Yes, yes.
Not in some of these emails that we received, that there's lists here as well, that the kids have to wait on lists if they can get seen. So the lists are everywhere. I would agree that the lists are everywhere.
I'm not disagreeing there. I feel like everybody's saying...
Wait, wait, wait. You don't, you have time for public comment? So I'm sorry, this isn't time for public comment.
Yeah, well, you know, it's like everything, you go through a process.
Correct.
If a kid needs to see a regular counselor at school, they go to the office and signs up on the list, and then the counselor goes down to the lesson, gets his name, that they talk to him about. That isn't any different than what we're talking about, I think, with Heritage Health here. That's just a part of the process you go through. But once again, I think the really critical issue is that, you know, parents make the ultimate decision on whether or not they're going to have their kids engaged in the program. And what referrals we make are done in consultation with the parents and the student. If the referral goes nowhere, then that's, that's a parent's decision. It's not our decision.
Right.
So, you know, as Professor Stephen says, this is, this is one step in the process of trying to help kids to be the most productive citizens they can. I agree with the notion that we would love to see the kind of passion that we've heard here tonight with regard to curriculum and a lot of other things. But I think the important aspect of that is that a kid is not interested in curriculum if he's not feeling well. So, you know, let's, let's try to address that problem so that, you know, he can get along at school, he can get along at home, she can feel good about herself, whatever the case might be. So when they come to school, they can do it as any normal child would.
Well, as far as the parents being in control, that's how I became aware of the program. Because as much as we would like to think that every parent was in control, those that weren't did not show up tonight, because when they were approached with the program, they were made to feel, whether it was true or not, their perception was they were being coerced or intimidated to make their child partake in the program on multiple occasions. That's how it came to my attention. And not only that, also in other schools we have, yeah, in other schools, yeah, elementary schools, Spirit Lake Elementary, Apple Elementary, multiple parents came to me. Not only was the one single mother forced to have her elementary child taken to the hospital, she felt like she had no other recourse. Because although maybe it's not a threat, when people remind you that not taking the recommendation may be looked at as medical neglect or some kind of neglect, that freaks people out. When we have parents that had no idea that their children were locked in a calm-down room enough to disturb other staff members in the school, and the parent found out, I don't know, 24, 36 hours later, by happenstance, the school never called the parent. I would like to think that parents are in charge, but parents are not in charge. Again, that was Apple Elementary. There, there have been many parents that have come to me, they're not standing up here, because they do feel intimidated. They feel bullied, just like these little kids that committed suicide in our district. Go ask the kids at the drive-thru why they did it. They'll tell you why. Because the sports kids were bullying them. That's exactly what they said. I mean, it is what it is, you know? These are whether, like I said, whether it's accurate or not, that's the interpretation. So I can't do that. I can't, there's no, there's no problem with us making the recommendation or saying, hey, here's the people we work with, or whatever. But some, not all, parents approach this with a sane enthusiasm, you know? And who does, I mean, this is the thing, it's a hot topic, no matter what we do, right? And I think that all of us, you know, like some of us, all of us have played a part in all of these tragedies, one way or another. You know, we've all been affected by it. Some right in our own households. In, in 2021, I think it was, in 2022, we asked Ms. Hamilton for this information, and first we were told we were going to have the information, and then we were told by the superintendent that we couldn't have the information, that it was something that... Number one, we were told it couldn't, first, when we first inquired about it, we were told that it was something, information, they laughed and said it couldn't be measured, and nobody tracked that kind of information. That's probably on a recording. You could probably find that. And then another time, we asked for it, and we were told that that was information that could not be supplied to the board to make a decision. So if we have parents coming to us complaining, and they're afraid to say anything, and then we have people within the district telling us that we can't have the information that we need to make a decision, what do we do?
If I don't understand, Ramona, is all five members of the district board voted in favor of maintaining the program here at health?
The changes that we asked for to the MOU, because there were some specific changes that we wanted made. That didn't come back to us for a whole nother year, and then we weren't even going to be provided with the redlined item to see what were they changing, because it was a significantly changed document. So we trusted the administration at that time, when we said, okay, we'll go again, to do what the board had asked, which was not done. And then here we are, a year later, and we finally have an MOU that's been changed again. So it's, it seems to be that the whole concept of mental health is very guarded and protected in that when you want information to have so that you're making an informed and educated decision based on data, you know, you're not allowed to have it. And when you ask for changes to an MOU, it's like, well, you don't have the right to ask for those. Yeah, we do, but we got it a year later.
So the question seems to be, are the changes in the MOU that we most recently seen that you wanted?
There were a lot of changes that are in there that I was kind of shocked about, but the biggest one being that they have stopped having the ability to give medication and manage medication to these kids on school grounds. Yeah, that one did finally get out of there.
So is there anything else in the MOU that you find as an option?
Wasn't the vote that we did for the, um, summer school program, that summer program? I think that's what we approved was the summer program.
Our opinion?
Yeah, I have...
The middle of last year?
Yeah.
July, I think, I think it's July.
Well, we found out about the summer program after the fact. And then we were told that no district funds would be spent on that, which was not accurate, because the district spent, I think, was about $10,000, yeah, on the summer program that we were told we were spending no money on. But, um... We, I don't believe we had the summer, we did not approve a summer contract for this year, but I'm not positive.
Yeah.
I think it was this year, this summer.
I think that's what started this iteration of the contract was, because it went for 13 months instead of the summer months. It came to us this summer. Yeah. Anyways, we're, I mean, we're just having a discussion, we're not making a decision.
Do you advise or entertain a motion?
I'm willing to admit that. I personally think that instead of... We have set precedent that we will survey the parents to find out what the parents want. We have 4,700 students in the district, so I think those 4,700 parents have the right to give their two cents on a survey of Heritage Health.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with that. Any parent should have the opportunity to, you know, state their case. And I, and I think we heard both sides of the issue here, we see overwhelmingly, you know, we have parents who are supporting it. I heard very similar comments outside of this arena from parents who I personally know, who have children who have, are either currently in the program or have gone through the program. I didn't find anyone who had a negative thing to say about it. Most were very thankful for the opportunity to have their kids in the program. And secondly, that they didn't have to take the kids out of school and miss a half-day at school to go to a session somewhere else, or they didn't have to take a half-day off of work in order to accommodate that. You know, it's easy to say every parent has responsibility to take care of those problems.
But there are parents that are doing that, that are taking their kids to...
That's true. Some have the wherewithal and the time.
It's not that they have the time, it's that they have set the precedent for their kids to make sure their kid gets help. So, I mean, I'm not going to say that some parents are bullied to just take the time off of their work, but they're doing it, is, is my point.
Sure, I understand.
Yeah.
Frankly, I've, I've heard all I need to hear. I don't, I don't need to... I guess I might ask if you have, the chair, can I entertain a motion?
Yes. Can I ask some questions? So the therapist's are licensed. Does the, does the school do background checks? Why?
Is there license to the state?
Yeah, but it doesn't matter if you have somebody that's volunteering over here.
They fingerprinted.
Yeah.
Yeah. I thought you meant like back, background. That's different, yes.
Yeah, fingerprinting them, okay.
Anybody who works on a, on a practice.
Well, I talked to a couple of counselors that I've known for a long time, and they explained the whole process to me. And it sounds like it's up to the parents. And like Michelle said, we didn't have a lot of the information. You know, we asked for information, and it doesn't get brought in front of the board. So how can we make a good decision without the information? And it happens a lot. It's not just this meeting, I mean, it's almost every meeting. And so, you know, with that, I'm just saying, I have more information now to make a better decision.
Can I entertain a motion?
I'll entertain a motion, Rob.
I move to approve the MOU with Heritage Health.
I would say.
How do you motion as second? All in favor say aye.
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 Three in favor, two opposed in motion case. And on that note, that concludes tonight's meeting at 7:45.